David, thanks for, thanks for sending somebody over there.
Thanks for sending Mark to this. Mark's going in the Danish ramp, young guy, he's Danish, right? So we'll have two guys out there. I always like that.
Well, I would agree. And she asked me, she goes, well, is anybody from the city going?
They're handmade, out of glass.
We're on the go.
Right, that's us.
Maybe.
And Mark is great with schools and the people parking and all that. So we've gone through many of them.
I kind of, I kind of warned her, I said, you know, I haven't looked at our CIP, but it may be on radar screens.
Right.
There's something there.
That, that is right. So, but anyway, it gets the ball rolling today.
You want that?
Yeah.
It didn't seem like it's probably the angle was killing it. Wonder about the mouse.
Yeah, you can use the mouse. I will probably move it though, because I don't like it how I'm using that.
Sure.
So, but yeah, feel free.
Hey Pete, you sounded good, ready to listen?
You did? You listened? Did you like what I was giving up for land? Did you like what I was giving up for land?
Hundred nineteenth kilo, part of it is, far as Michael's.
So, come on split? Is it good?
Yeah. Yeah, he's got the south side, I got the north side.
Mike, you want to do legislative stuff right off the bat?
Okay, good morning, everybody.
Good morning Chairman and Commissioner. This morning for staff, we have a short story and a long story. The short story is going to be, Mike, just giving an update on up to the minute legislative issues, just a few minutes on that. But the bulk of the meeting will be our, a meeting to discuss kind of where we're at with space analysis and space needs and administrative building discussion. So with that, I'll get, turn the mic's one over to Mike first.
Morning, Mike.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. And this will be very brief, but I thought with all of you together, this might be a good time to discuss a couple of issues anyway. Two of our bills that are in front of the Senate Elections and Local Government Committee, Ethics and Local Government, are going to be heard at 9:30 a.m. a week from tomorrow, or a week from Thursday morning. It would be nice to have at least two, maybe more commissioners up testifying on behalf of these bills. One, of course, is the nuisance abatement bill. I think I've talked to Commissioner Howell about this. It might be good if somebody has these kinds of nuisance properties in their, their district to talk, talk about that bill. And I know Commissioner O'Donnell and Commissioner Howell both have significant nuisance issues in their, their district. The other bill is the Charter Commission. And talking to the Chairman yesterday, he was thinking that maybe Commissioner Dennis, if you're willing to do it, can talk, since you've been involved with that issue more and urban counties may want to address the committee on the Charter Commission. Charter, it's an hour-long committee meeting. Charter Commission discussion will hopefully be very brief and that most of the hearing can be, those are the only two bills that'll be heard. And that most of the hearing would be on the nuisance abatement legislation that we have, but.
And the Charter Commission bill is what number?
You wouldn't tell me that. It's, I will. Here, you got it. It's, I didn't bring. Thursday.
Thursday.
It's the Charter Commission bill, the, the, 423? 423. Nuisance abatement bill.
Our, our discussion was that, since you had more background on it, the charter is just to, to get the, the board from Kansas City to Wichita area. And so I think you could, but we don't know what kind of questions might come about historically, whatever, if you're available.
No, I'd be happy to. The, we're just going to have to keep me informed remotely, because I don't get back to DC until like six, the day before. Yeah, so, but I'd be happy to just to make sure that, you know, let me know where I'm supposed to be and when I'm supposed to be there. And if we've got written testimony set up, sent up there, why, make sure I have a copy of that. And we're, we're preparing the testimony for both, I think Chris Labram will also be asked to testify on the nuisance abatement bill, so I have Chris. Chris, talk about some of the, he, according to Jason, did a good job last year testifying on the bill and some of the reasons for the needs of the bill. But I think commissioners can bring the story more into focus with what has happened in their district. And also talk about the fact that we're not using this willy-nilly. I mean, we're, we're going beyond due process, what cities and proven district boards have to use this. We're, we're building an extra due process. Let the committee know that.
And do they have pictures? Have we sent them up, pictures?
Yes, Chris Labram did a really nice job of putting together a packet of pictures and that we're, we're going to make sure that committee members have, so.
And understand, and reminded that Chris testified before on this. Apparently did a really nice job with the committee.
Right.
So that'll help.
And we will, I'll let each of the commissioners know who the committee members are, and if there are any local ones or any ones you, you have relations with or know well enough to call and talk to them ahead of time, that'd be great as well, so. Other than that, we, we've been contacting legislators and submitting testimony in opposition to the bill that would require us to go through the Attorney General's office to have contingency fee contracts. There was supposed to be a hearing on that yesterday, and that was postponed, probably till after turnaround, so. They haven't taken action on that. Committee has not taken action on that bill.
Okay, I was actually talking to Chairman, so I totally missed that. But I wanted to make, so I apologize, but I wanted to see if we could send a, an intern to go with and check out the Charter Commission. Is that anything that Aaron could go to? Okay. And then what was that last bill?
The last bill is, is the bill that deals with counties. At first it was we had to go through the AG's office anytime we wanted to do a contingency fee contract with an attorney. Now it's been limited to more like the opioid legislation, the vaping legislation, school districts are doing. But still, we have some concerns about the bill, that they're taking, that the legislature's trying to take away our authority to enter into contracts for legal services on behalf of our citizens. And so we, we're generally in opposition of this bill at this time.
Do you have the number for that one?
I think it's twenty, House Bill 2461, Commissioner.
We've been, we've been somewhat assured that it, that our opioid could be, would be grandfathered, we'd be okay, but it's really, it's not specific.
In the reading of the bill, it looks like it's only perspective, even as long as we don't amend our agreement with our attorneys or enter into another agreement, we're okay.
But as you said, it, we don't know what the future is, and so.
That's all I have this morning.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
So Commissioner Howell, you're right with Thursday going up there maybe?
I don't know. You can do that.
Okay. And I think maybe Commissioner O'Donnell will decide for sure if he wants to as well on the nuisance side, so.
Yeah, okay.
Should be well represented. Okay, Mr. Manager, what else you got?
All right, the next, Tanya, Cole will get up and talk us through the newest version of the space analysis. And I guess, just to kind of go back to chapter one of this story, the county, mostly because of the growth in public safety areas, sheriff, DA to some degree, and potentially the courts. We have a space problem here. And we've talked about this a number of times over the last two or three years. We were, Tanya and I were going through the notes of how many times we've talked in public about this. And I guess today is a chance for Tanya to give us an update. We also, in that timeframe, have a new administrative judge now. Judge Fleetwood is gone, and Judge Garing is the new admin judge. And has a little bit of different idea on what the courtroom structure should look like in the future. And I think he wants to make a, a real intention to plan ahead and make sure that we have space for the next several generations, instead of maybe just building for the here and now on how much space we need. So that has changed the dynamics of this slightly. I think everybody's represented in this room. The election commissioner is here, she's involved because of her space issues and where she's physically located. All of the elected offices, I think, have representatives here. So it's a good time to have a discussion here. And I think from your perspective to, if there's any doubt in our mind that this is needed, if we have, if we don't have a space issue, then we can stop this discussion. If you feel that we have a space issue, then I think the next thing we need to do is figure out what we're going to do about it. And that's this, that's this discussion and, and kind of what Tanya is going to lead us through. So let's have her give us an update. Justin Graham's here from Shaver, John's, Cox, and Frye. And he's also available for questions. And then if there's any financial question, Lindsay's on board to answer those. So with that, Tanya, take us through the.
Okay. Well, good morning Chairman and Commissioners. Manager kind of stole my first slide there, so I was going to introduce Justin Graham, who will be part of this presentation this morning, as well as Lindsay Povarsa, who will go over some of the financial information this morning for the space needs follow-up discussion this morning. This next slide, if you will recall, back in July, which was the last time we came to you, Justin and I went through some pretty intense floor-by-floor discussion of our space plan for the main courthouse, historic courthouse in Munger. And so this is a really condensed version and update of, of that master space plan. And for District Court, I will tell you, this is the new vision that we met with Judge Garing and Ellen Howes. So this is an update to that. But I'm really going to focus on the red font that you'll see there. And so when we met, and back in 2017, what, what our goal was, was to see where we were at with current space, find out what the needs were. And, and so in the red, what you'll see there is the additional square footage need for District Court, District Attorney and Sheriff. And with our master space plan, if we were to implement the master space plan, we fill with the courthouse complex that we can satisfy the, the need for District Court, District Attorney and Sheriff within the courthouse complex. And we can do that with the main courthouse, historic courthouse in Munger. And so you'll see there, for District Court, their additional square footage need is 32,545 square feet. So we can satisfy that need for District Court with the main courthouse, historic courthouse in Munger. District Attorney, their need for square footage is just a little bit under 15,000 square feet. And they'll be getting some new space here in the summer, just a little bit over 9,000 square feet on the second and third floor, the west end. And so their net additional square footage need is just a little bit under 6,000 square feet. We can satisfy that need still in the main courthouse, and that'll be on the second and third floor. And then Sheriff, you, you know that we have the expansion at the adult detention facility. What they still need in this main courthouse is the need for their judicial space. So that's the only operations that they'll still have left in the main courthouse. And so that need there is still 950 square feet. We can satisfy that need within the main courthouse. And so I just want to go back over that without going into the great detail of the floor-by-floor, but again, just give you that update for space needs there. I'm going to transition to our county admin building. We've not really talked about the new proposed building, but I want to give Justin Graham an opportunity to talk about his work that he's worked over in the last several months. He's proposing just under 90,000 square feet. And he's going to go over his block diagrams for four floors and a basement. He's going to show his rendering that he's done, as well as a site plan. So I'm going to turn over the next several slides over to Justin Graham.
Morning, Justin.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, and staff. It's a pleasure to be with you this morning. As Tanya said, I'm going to focus on the administration building here. And we haven't had a chance to look at that before, so I'm excited to show what that could potentially look like for you. So just to get you oriented here with the floor plan, this is the first floor. And to the right would be Main Street. And to the north would be Elm Street. If I can use this as a pointer. The gray shape down here represents a portion of the annex that would remain. And really that would be more part of the courthouse building than it would be part of the administration building. So everything you see above this gray block would be new construction. So here at the first floor, main entrance, in this area, one would walk into a two-story tall space, similar to the current courthouse that you walk into that has the high volume. On the north side, we would envision the treasurer's office with pay stations in this area. And to the south, a cafe. Moving into the center area of the plan, we would have elevators and restrooms and mechanical and electrical and stairs. And those would stack as we go up and down throughout the building. And then on the far west side, we show the BOCC meeting room. That would include an executive conference meeting space within that block of space. And then the brown portion to the north of that would be IT, business solutions, enterprise resources planning. And then to the, finishing out the plan, we have studio space here in the gray, some storage, and then this would be an employee entrance through here. To the south side, at the first floor only, we would have a connecting link into the courthouse. That would be a secure link with access control between those buildings. Moving to the second floor, arriving at the elevator lobby here, to the right, we would have the register of deeds. And with windows along this border here would overlook the lobby below. And then to the left, we would have the clerk's office. And then on the north side, we have the remainder of the IT, BS, ERP department. Then moving up to the third floor, on the right, east side, we have finance. And on the west side, human resources. And then a small area here to the south would be facilities. And then we have about 700 square feet of available area on this floor plate. And moving up to the fourth floor, on the east side, we would have the commissioners' offices. And then the county counselor to the south of that. And then on the west side, county manager, with about 2,000 square feet of available area on this floor. It's, it's shown as two divided in half into two areas, but that could easily be contiguous as one developable space. And then last floor plan would be for the basement. And so that's largely occupied by records on the east side here. We would also have a new data center, moving over from the historic courthouse to this location in the brown. And then the rest of the floor would finish out with mechanical and electrical space. If we take a look at the site plan, you can see the, the addition here. This portion is the portion of the annex that would remain that I mentioned prior to. And we would envision a large public plaza area in front that would connect the garage to both buildings with, with pedestrian traffic areas. And then we think, in order to fit this building on this site, we would need to narrow Elm Street, probably from two lane with parking on both sides to two lane with parking on one side only, just to get enough buffer to fit the building in here on the north edge. We do show an option for the development of the, the site, which is kind of exciting. If Elm Street were to close, this could be developed into green space. Could have picnic benches or areas for staff to take breaks or, or bring a sack of lunch and enjoy lunch outside. In order to do that, we would need to create a cul-de-sac circular drive area in front of the African Museum here, at the south end of Water Street. And we would still have access for deliveries and so forth to the back of the administration building and to serve the courthouse through here. And then maintain access to reserved parking spaces related to the jail. So the next image you have here is the proposed new Sedgwick County Administration Building. This is a modern design that complements the existing courthouse beyond. The building's largely transparent with glass, but we would envision the remaining areas clad with an architectural metal panel. Those light areas are metal panels that would complement the, the marble on the existing building beyond. With all new construction, we can achieve a high-energy efficient addition to the campus. And that area you see in the front would be the pedestrian area, the plaza area. And you can catch a glimpse to the ride of, of the green space that could be developed where Elm Street sits. And so overall, we think this would be a very handsome addition to the campus. And that concludes my presentation.
Any questions so far? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Did you bring some guests with you today?
We do. Our President Shannon Bohm and Director Joe Johnson is here.
Welcome.
Okay, so as Justin and I worked through the master space plan, what we basically came up with is a five-year phasing construction plan that we think results in basically a 20-year public safety and county administration space needs plan for, for those programs. So in other words, five years of work that results in 20-plus years of space and growth for those programs of public safety and county administration. So that would be completed for District Attorney in June of 2021, Sheriff in November of 2021, County Admin in December of 2023, and District Court completed in September of 2025. So I've broken those down into basically three projects. The first project then being Project Courthouse Complex Phase One. Construction costs then of 5.7 million, soft costs and inflation of 2.1 million for total costs of 7.9. Let me explain, soft costs are, that includes A&E fees, which are architectural and engineering fees to do the design work, project contingency, FFNE or furnitures, fixtures, and equipment, movers and signage, that is soft costs. All Sheriff's space needs then again would be satisfied and completed November of 2021. All District Attorney's space needs satisfied and completed June of 2021. District Court space needs would be, they would receive Traffic Court, two additional courtrooms, PFA and PFS hearing room, and other operational improvements would be completed October of 2024 in this first phase. The next project then being the County Administration Building. With this, we would have to move off-site and temporary lease for 36 months. The commission, the manager, counselor, clerk, deeds, and IT for a cost of approximately 1.4 million. Now, I'm, I'm going to tell you that we will probably need election space in this scenario. So we would, we would like to use election space, move them out and use their space so that we wouldn't have to lease so much space. That's the first piece we need to use, the election space. When I get to the next project, which is the Phase Two, we really need election space because we're going to move courts, family law courts over into historic courthouse. That's another reason that we're going to need election space. And so part of the discussion that we need to have, and there's a slide in here, we'll get to the elections building, but we are recommending that really elections move out of that space and we find a, a location for them. But the construction cost for the County Administration Building is 21.6, soft cost is 8 million, so for total cost of 29.6. This takes care of all county admin space needs satisfied and completed December of 2023. So then the third project then being Project Courthouse Complex Phase Two, construction costs of 5.1, soft costs and inflation of 2.4 million, and then total cost of 7.5. This then takes care of all of District Court's space needs, giving them five additional courtrooms, again satisfying all of their space needs and completed September of 2025. I will tell you that this portion of the project can be delayed or deferred once we know if District Court is assured of these additional judges. But this plan does move over family law courts from the fourth floor over to historic courthouse. Okay, this next slide I'm going to turn over to Lindsay, and she's going to talk about bond and debt service.
Good morning, Commissioners. So the most revving part of this whole discussion, right, is debt service.
Yes, yes.
So what this slide illustrates is simply a concept, and it is estimated figures. So after Tanya had shared these revised figures, we reached out to our municipal advisor to see what options we have, how would we want to handle this? Because this is, or would be, one of the largest issuances, largest projects we've done in recent years, certainly beyond anything I myself have dealt with. And so one of the suggestions that our municipal advisor had would be for us to work with commissioners to maybe do a, a debt issuance a little differently than how we've done it in the past. So typically, when we do projects, we spend the money and then we reimburse ourselves. This is so large that we wouldn't necessarily want to spend all that money at the get-go and reimburse ourselves later, because as you've seen, our available fund balance just simply isn't high enough to do this. So a great strategy that they recommended, and I'm not saying this is the right number, this would all be done in consultation with you all, would be to do an advance, basically an advance bond issue, so that we would target a certain portion of the project and get that cash upfront, so that we would have it available. That is especially appealing to me right now, because interest rates are so low, they are at historic lows. And so certainly when you look at a 4% interest rate, that can cost you around $400,000 on a million dollars worth of debt, versus maybe a 2.5 to 3% interest rate, that will cut that almost in half. That's a, that's a huge bonus to us as we contemplate a project like this, where we do believe there's a need and there's a viable solution to fix that. So what this contemplates then is that in 2021, we would have a bond issuance for approximately 75% of the estimated administrative building costs, along with funding through that debt issuance, year one of that courthouse complex Phase One. So that would be roughly 25.7 million. Now, as you know, our debt policy right now says that we will pay off 30% of our principal in the first five years and 60% in the first 10 years. We may want to look at tweaking those provisions for this debt issuance. But if we just look at an average annual over a 20-year term, that roughly equates to 1.7 million per year for that particular debt issuance. In 2022, because we would have some cash available to spend as we're working on these projects, we wouldn't contemplate doing a debt issuance for this particular project. In 2023, we would know what those final costs were for the entire project, and so we would plan to do the remainder of whatever those costs were through bond funding for that first. first part of the project, plus we would bond the cost of year two of the courthouse complex Phase One. In 2024, we would contemplate doing, returning to a more normal schedule, as opposed to trying to do bonding in advance. We would plan to fund year one of the courthouse complex Phase Two work, and then in 2025, we would do year two. And you can see, of course, the $1.7 million is the greatest figure in average annual debt service, and you can see how those other debt issuances work. Now, at the bottom of the slide, we do have some assumptions that are important to take into account. First would be the 3% interest in 2021. I'm no economist, I'm no Jeremy Hill, but certainly we think those are pretty reasonable and might even actually be less than that. And then 4% in '22 and beyond, we again plan for 20-year terms. We do anticipate that this would be general obligation debt. The reason that's important is that becomes, or that comes with a lower interest rate than if we do PBC or anything else. Now, Tanya had talked about leases and movers. That is not typically something we would want to fund through bonds. If you recall, that in 2018, you all issued some bonds to cover the Ronald Reagan Building. We had set aside at the end of that year $3 million of cash, and so we would anticipate using that $3 million to pay for a number of those soft costs, movers, and those types of things. So that is not included in these bond issuance figures. So I am happy to talk through, I think there have been some questions about what differences this looks like versus what we have. I'm happy to do that now, or we can talk about that later after Tanya finishes the presentation.
Okay, yes, Commissioner.
Do you have a sheet of what all these different phases together would be?
I...
I did a rough calculation of roughly $45 million plus the election building, but I just didn't see.
There is no one single grand total, but yes, I do have that sheet, and I can provide it to you. The total would be $45,120,588.
And that doesn't include the election office?
That does not at this time.
So we're hitting right around 50?
Probably, yes, sir.
Ooh, thank you.
What was the cost of Exploration Place when we built that?
Sorry, I have a few papers with me. The original principal for Exploration Place is actually not on this sheet. We are paying roughly $1 million, $1.1 million per year now, though, with refundings. So if I reverse engineer that over 20 years, that would be approximately $20 million in principal and interest, 21, so probably around $15 or $16 million, but I will get those figures to you.
And NCAT? How much do that cost?
NCAT was $44 million.
So we spent $60 million on things that are great for quality of life and for education, and now we're having to make a decision on whether or not we provide funding for things that allow us to do business in the county.
Yeah, and if I may follow up on that, so one of the interesting pieces of information, when Tom had mentioned some of your questions yesterday, is that we looked at some legal debt margins. How are we doing in terms of what are we legally able to debt fund? And at the end of 2018, we were at 13%. We have historically been anywhere as high as 47%. Our debt has been as high as $147 million in debt outstanding any time, and we would not hit that under this scenario. I think that's really important to note. We have some of the lowest debt service we've ever had, and looking at our 20-year projections, that debt gets smaller and smaller every year.
And Exploration Place rolls off when?
And we make the last payment in 2022.
2022. And NCAT rolls off when?
We make the last payment of $3.1 million in 2028. And we have a couple others rolling off. We have the Juvenile Justice Complex that we make the last payment on in 2026, that's about $700,000 per year. Spirit, that payment, that was the $7 million for the building, that was set up as a 10-year term, so we paid that off in 2028, that'll be about $800,000 per year. And then the radio system goes off in 2031, and that's about $700,000, though the bulk of that is paid by the 911 tax fund. So there's some significant debt falling off as we contemplate these issuances.
Okay, thank you. Other questions?
I guess a couple of my questions are, so we say we're planning for 20-plus years, okay? And I guess one of, I'm just, it's like a broad question, why do we have space issues in our courts?
That is not a good question.
And I don't actually need an answer. I guess it's more of just like, we have space needs in our courts because we're not doing anything to prevent people from going there. So if we spent $29 million, $45 million-ish, these are crazy high numbers, if we spent that kind of money in helping our homeless population, our people that are continually going to sack for substance abuse problems, I mean, these are just like big questions that I have, that I have to consider when thinking about spending $45 million. And I get, there are some really great things about this as far as interest rates and space, you know, I mean, those kinds of things as far as the B.O.C.C., meaning this room, being on the first floor, it's easier for people to get in and out. But when we talk about our courthouse now putting our PFA and our PFS in the basement, I mean, there's just a lot of things for me to consider. And I hope that I'm articulating my issues as to reasons why it's hard for me to justify spending that much money, because I think we have a lot of things that we need to consider as far as what, where the money goes. If we talk about mental health being our number-one priority, I feel like that's where our money should go.
All right. Michael, yeah.
Mental health is our number-one legislative priority, but public safety is our number-one priority. I want to make sure that we don't miss that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, and this is probably for Tanya, so I don't, if somebody else needs to ask Lindsay anything.
No, I think so. Lindsay, thanks, you did a nice job of explaining that.
You always do a nice job.
Yeah. This time you did a nice job.
Yes, even better. Even better. But, so Tanya, I guess here's my issue. We've seen other proposals, whether it was the Main Street Partners, last year Mr. Ruffin offered to sell us the Epic Center for far less money than this, and we would have far more square footage. So I just, I would like to see the value breakdown of all the different proposals we've seen, and what's the cost per square foot? Because to me, it would make more sense to have everybody under one roof, even the election commissioner. So instead of buying a separate facility for the election commissioner, why wouldn't we look for a building that would have all of our needs put into one? We lease space out at Marina Lakes, we lease space at the Wichita Mall, we lease space in lots of places, even in downtown Wichita, we're leasing space. So why wouldn't, if we truly want to get a campus-type setting or get everybody together, why wouldn't we look at a larger building, like the Main Street Building or the Epic Center, or something where every county office could be in one building except the courts and the DA, and then not have all these lease payments, not have so many facilities across the county? Is there not value in being in one building for everything?
Yeah, we can certainly do that. Let me kind of jump to this slide. One of the reasons that we focused on the campus location goes back to 2018 when we had a stakeholder meeting, and these are really kind of the four factors and components of why we focused on this campus location. And it had all the stakeholders, it had district court, DA, it had sheriff, and it had, you know, kind of our internal departments, and these were kind of the four factors of why we focused on this particular location.
But isn't it true that most people when they're coming here, that there's not a whole lot of interaction between our row offices, the commission offices, and the court systems? I mean, we work together with them very well, they're our partners, but that this building serves two functions, an administration function and a legal function. And what's the crossover? Out of every 100 people that come into the courthouse, how many people are utilizing both the administration and the legal offices in this building?
Yeah.
Do we have any information on that?
I don't know if we have any analytics, but I know what we heard from those departments were, the sheriff office interacts a lot with the clerk's office, and the DA and district court interacts with the treasurer's office a lot and the counselor's office a lot. And so what we're hearing is that that interaction is very valuable to have, you know, kind of on that campus location, is just that interaction back and forth between those departments. Public-wise, I know that probably to what you're saying is, you know, some of the public that's interacting with our administration is maybe not interacting so much with the courts or the DA.
Yeah, I mean, it's an issue that I hear a lot, people come in, they don't like coming to my office because they feel like they're going through TSA at the airport, right? Take off your belt, you know, it's a hassle. So just my question would be, when we're looking at all these numbers, what's the most value for the taxpayer? What's the lowest, I want to see, out of all the options, what's the lowest square footage dollar per square foot? Not what is necessarily most convenient for us, but what's best for the public? So that's something I'd like to see.
Some of those things, though, aren't quantifiable in a number. I get it that you, you know, want to see square foot, you know, the dollar per square foot, but I mean, I think having a feeling of safety or the way things are designed, I mean, even designing a stairwell so that it's all glass so people can see you going up and down might benefit health, because more people will see other people walking up and down the stairs instead of taking the elevator. I mean, those kinds of things, you can't quantify, I think, you know, I mean, so that's...
Yeah, I agree with you. I agree with you. I just would like to see breakdowns so that I can make a financially conservative decision.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't want to be short-sighted and concentrate on square footage, what it costs per square foot, because that does not quantify what it costs us for the life cycle of this. And I've said this for the last three years, is that we have to look at the life cycle cost of this, of the building. If we go down to the main building that you were talking about, we don't have any parking down there, so we're going to have to add in either renting parking for the next 20, 50 years, or we have to buy parking garages. Here, we don't have that problem. So if you build a new building, you don't have all of the maintenance and upkeep that you do when you buy an old building. If we're going to just go by square foot, what it costs us per square foot, we're going to be very, very short-sighted.
Okay, a couple of questions. So we knew that we had some issues with the sheriff's office, and we've got that under control, right? I mean, with the sheriff expansion then?
Correct. For the most part, we've taken care of the sheriff's office. We have a little bit of square footage that we'll need to take care of in the main courthouse. They have a little bit under 1,000 square feet that we need to take care of for their judicial operations.
Well, what I'm getting at, I'm trying to prioritize. So sheriff, and then we knew that DA's office needed space, so by helping the sheriff, now we're able to satisfy a lot of the DA?
Correct.
Okay, so those two checked off. So what's our highest priority right now?
I would say probably the next priority would be district court.
Courts?
Correct. If right now, if they have, if they have a judge that comes on, we have no space to put a judge.
Like a portable trailer or something?
I don't know if they want to do that.
Okay, and then where does, how about elections? Would that be like second important?
Let me move to elections slide.
I just want to try to understand for...
So one of our recommendations is to move elections out of their current location. And part of that is because if we move forward with this master space plan, we're going to need the space that they have currently in Historic Courthouse. So right now, they are on the CIP watch list for $3 million, and the reason that they're on the watch list is because some of the homeland security factors that they were kind of pushing on elections, they were still, we were still trying to kind of understand what those factors are, and I don't know that we have that information yet. Their need is for a 28,000-square-foot building, half of that being warehouse and half of that being office and training. So it would be our recommendation that we maybe move that forward and take that off the watch list. One of the questions that we had last time is, where is the geographic center of Cedric County related to where we might move the elections office? That information is, the geographic center is at Rolling Hills Golf Course, so in Commissioner Dennis's district, so.
Okay.
And Tabitha's here, so I don't know, Tabitha, if you want to speak to, if you have any information on the homeland security or anything of...
Did your passport work? What? Did your passport get you back in the country? It did, I think three times. I'm hiding sunburns, but I had a great time, so thanks for asking. Yes, we have met with Homeland Security, and they are actually going to come out and do a physical analysis. We went through this with the sheriff's office and made some changes based on the sheriff's office recommendations, but we're going to go ahead and have Homeland Security come out and do a physical assessment so that we have basically what their best practices are that they're recommending for us, and we should be able to do that fairly quickly so then we can have a much better idea moving forward as far as what their recommendations are for us.
All right. So two things. What is the most urgent and time-sensitive that we need to worry about? I mean, if we review this again in six months, or, I mean, do we need to make, we knew we needed to make decisions pretty quick for the sheriff and assist the DA, so I'm trying to get a grasp of how urgent this is.
I think that...
Time of money, I heard.
Well, yeah, that's...
Cost of money.
If we see in our future that we need to make adjustments on space, now is a good time to do it, just sheerly because of the economics of where the interest rates are at.
Makes sense.
We wait two or three, four years, we don't know what we're going to run into. Back to your original question, I don't know if Mark's back here or not, or Jeanette, but I think that we've got the DA's office some space, I think about half, about two-thirds of the space he needs. I'm not so sure that he's checked off the list yet. That's a component in addition to the potential court growth that could happen.
Okay.
And a good, I want Tanya to talk a little bit about what the fire did to us and how we got to see, when you take two courtrooms offline, even for four to six weeks, what that does to the operations, and heaven forbid that would have been longer, we have no capacity to, we'd have been looking at trailers, or we'd have been looking at off-site space to lease or rent for them to run operations, if you want to talk about it.
Yeah, and Ellen's here too, and she can certainly speak to it, but when we had the fire on the east side of the main courthouse, that took out two courtrooms, and we just happened to be lucky because we actually had two courtrooms that could be used, basically due to the death of a recent judge and as well as a judge that's on deployment, so there were two courtrooms available. Had that not been the case, we would have been really in dire straits, because we would not have had two courtrooms to move these judges to. And Ellen, I don't know if that's, if I'm saying anything, or if you want to speak to that.
That's absolutely correct. Judge Pullman's division has not been filled yet by the governor, and so that allowed his courtroom to be utilized, and Judge Mon is still deployed, she will not be back until later in April. We also were able to move the small claims court over to the historic courtroom in Historic Courthouse. That is not a courtroom that we like to use on a daily basis, because quite frankly, it gets torn up, and we like to keep that in more pristine condition. But that was an option that we had available, and we used it. So we are getting by, and we literally have people stuck in libraries, we have a judge and his aide that are working in a library across, from a table from one another, and so the judges have been very, very flexible in making this situation work. But had those two courtrooms not been available, we would have been leasing something.
Is there, on these courts, is there state money that helps fund this? Is there, on these courts, is there state money that helps fund this, or is it, they just tell us we need more judges and we have to pay for it all?
The way that the district court is funded, and it's by statute, is all of the, the operational costs are borne by the county.
What about the capital space requirements?
That included, yes, that's included.
Thank you, sir, may I have another? Mark? Sorry. That was a, that's in a movie, it's not me. Mark? I was just going to take... Dion, don't put that in this, please.
30 seconds and, and I won't be quoting Animal House.
Okay, sorry.
I was just going to point out that, to speak to, a couple of things have been raised here. To Lacy's point, the, the notion of investing more in reform type activities to help alleviate the stress on the court system is obviously an ongoing discussion. You were at a meeting yesterday where I mentioned that a bill that was part of getting through the legislature is, has been passed out of committee, and it's going to help with diversions and expanding the use of diversions, both in this jurisdiction statewide, I think it's a very good thing. There's also, and part of that discussion, I say this as the Chair of the Reform Commission in Topeka, there's also a lot of discussion about, I mean, if we're going to take people, I mean, hopefully people just don't commit crimes, that's the, the goal of these, all these reform efforts, but there's still going to be folks who do that because of addiction issues, because of other issues. And the point is, when they get to the front door of the courthouse, is there a way to divert them away to something else? But you have to have something to divert them to for this to be effective. So that money is to be spent. But part of that, and that kind of gets lost in this, is there's an oversight component to that, and that, and if you've been at the drug court graduation, so that's a great example of it. We divert them to drug court, but there's still a court, there's still a meet, there's still a need to have a court, a judge meet these folks two days a week. There's also discussions about veterans courts, there's discussion about mental health courts, and some of these, we call them niche courts, but there are things, there's a mechanism for the criminal justice system to have some oversight into these, these reform efforts. Each one of those requires a judge, a courtroom, support staff, et cetera. And so even if we're talking about, the ultimate goal is to keep people out of the penitentiary, keep people from victimizing their fellow citizens, et cetera, but there's still a, a front loaded component to this where we have to have adequate court space, we have to have adequate support staff, et cetera. So the goal is that all of these efforts that we're doing, and there's a whole lot of balls in the air right now, both at the state level and obviously at the county level as well, all of those will have a, a positive effect long term. Because quite frankly, if we don't, we're going to, we're going to need more than this in 20 years, because, you know, the, the trends will keep going. If we don't do something to curb methamphetamine, if we don't do, all these things we've discussed ad nauseam, but in the short term, we're still going to need the court space to attend to these things, to give the opportunity and space for those reform efforts to take hold. So I, I don't want to take up more of your time than necessary, but I don't think it's a one or the other. And whether you do this or not, you can come up with a whole nother plan, we're still going to need more court space for the, for the judges, because if all of these reform efforts take hold and veterans courts, mental health courts, et cetera, are, are imposed by the state legislature, we're going to need a place to have those courtrooms and have those events take place, so.
So we talked yesterday, in addition to that conversation, about a cost avoidance study. We have one for emergency rooms, why don't we have one for our criminal justice system? Could you speak to, you know, the numbers that you were talking about as far as 6,300 inmates, only 6,200 come out?
Yeah, so the Kansas Department of Corrections, prisons, the adult side. One thing I didn't mention yesterday, because it was kind of a truncated conversation about that, but the, one of the highest increases in population has been the female population. That was not the case 20 years ago. And so that's something that's very much related to mental health issues and drug and substance abuse issues. That's one place where the DOC says, if we could really get more availability of treatment in the locale, in the, you know, regional treatment centers, or even better, you know, county regional, or county centers, they think that's one place where the population could really be impacted. But to your point, if you just want to know raw numbers, about 6,300, 6,400 people a year go into the state penitentiary system, and depending on the year, in the last few years, and always about 100 more stay in and come out. So if 6,300 went in, 6,200 paroled out, or got out on what we call post-release, and that's why we've had an increase, and we're, we're hitting max capacity. You've read in the paper that the governor's sending 100 folks to Arizona to a private prison because she's out of space. Cedric County historically sends about 20% of the people, by ourselves, to the state pen. So if you think about it, if we could just reduce by 10% the amount of folks we send, ignore the other 104 counties, if we just reduce by 10% the number of people that I send, we don't have, or we're real close to not having a, too many folks in the penitentiary system. And so there is a cost benefit analysis to the state of Kansas. You think about $29,500 on average for a, a year in the state pen. Maximum security versus minimum security, the numbers fluctuate, but that's the, that's the median. Just those numbers alone, you can start to do some cost benefit. The DOC does have a cost benefit analysis, what the, the real thing is, it's, this is what it's going to cost us if we don't do something different. And the projections are 12,000 people in the state pen by the end of the next decade as opposed to 10,000 we have today. So we're not doubling every 10 years, but if we're at capacity, capacity right now, and we're 100 over, we're going to be 2,000 over in 10 years. So we, as a state, have to do something, and it's frankly up to every locality, every local jurisdiction to do their part to, to do these folks. I can do this all day, so I don't want to take up any time, but does that address your question?
Yeah, yes, thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Appreciate it. Okay, um, my last comment, and then any others, is out of fairness, listening to what Commissioner O'Donnell said and taking it all in, some of these dates historically were kind of before Commissioner Cruz and I's time on the, and would it be much effort to kind of dust off all the options, I mean, you could do per square foot, as Michael was saying, but more total square foot and total needs, and make sure the options that at least I, maybe Commissioner Cruz could, could kind of catch up on and say, how did we get to probably what looks like a campus environment decision? I, I kind of feel like I understand a little bit, but I never really saw the analysis on, on the other options that were out there.
Absolutely. We can come back to, do you want me to come back to you individually, or come back at a, a staff meeting, or?
Probably to save them, just, us individually, but I don't know.
Would you have like specifics of which buildings you'd like? I mean, we had 105 North Main, right? We had, I mean, that Riverview building, I don't know that, does anybody want to see that one? Okay, so it's not for sale. So maybe just the 105 Main, or what, what are the other ones? I think we need to give like expectations of...
That's what I was saying, that's exactly...
That one?
That, and then Epic Center, I don't even know what all the options you were all looking at a few years ago.
I think we had the Murphin...
Within a couple of weeks. I mean, what's our sense of urgencies to, to, are we okay? And then kind of...
We can, we can come back to both of you, bring you up to speed, it's actually, I think it's 150 North Main.
What did I say?
We had some Epic Center options, we looked at a lot of Third and Wake, or Third and Main to south of City Hall for...
Oh yeah, that's right.
So there's, there was four, five that keep us within, I, we looked at a lot of buildings across the state of the county.
Right, okay, we don't need to look at all.
But then it became important, the further we worked into this, that the campus mentality was important, not just for today's operations, but we're talking about a 30 to 40, 50 year lookout. If you'd ever unified government, we wanted to maintain a campus setting for a lot of reasons. So now, if you're, if, if, if the commission is comfortable with the concept that the campus setting is important, that is 150 North Main, it's Epic, it's three block radius around this building, that limits your options considerably, so including...
And with one time, the parking lot right north, right south of the, of the city hall?
Yes.
And that's another, so okay, if we can just get a 30,000 foot view.
And I, I also will take responsibility, I should have invited Denise Sherman with TCAM, but can we make sure that she's a part of this too? Because TCAM is a part of this. I mean, regardless of what, we, they need to be in these conversations, I don't see, I mean, Carol and I both sit on the board, but I think we need to make sure that their leadership team is plugged in.
We've, we've talked to Denise specifically about what this conversation was going to be about, she is aware of it.
I guess I just would have liked her in the room today, so.
Absolutely.
Yes, I guess some final comments. We've been discussing this for about three years now. We've plowed the same ground over and over and over again, and nothing has grown yet. So at some point, we're going to have to make a decision, one way or the other. I think we need to involve not only TCAM, but we need to make sure that all of the electeds that are impacted by this, their voices are heard. We've gotten a letter from them, shoot, a year ago now, on what their needs are, and we need to make sure that we listen to what their needs are. Money is at an all time low right now. In a few years, we don't have any idea. I, I'm not Jeremy Hill, I can't tell you what it's going to be in three years or so, but we need to make a decision, one way or the other, at some point. We can't just keep saying, hey, we've got a problem, we know that the DA needs space, we know the courts need space, we know that we've got issues that our other electeds are interested in, and we, we have all these nice slides, we've got pretty discussions, and we don't make a decision. Some point, we're getting paid to make a decision, and, and I, I just think that it's time that we do our, what we're responsible for, what we got elected for, and we make a decision.
I love that. I concur.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've been quiet, listening to the discussion for a while, and I'll say, number one, thank you for the presentation, thank you for the, the good work on the architectural concepts. I think it was very well done, appreciate you guys doing that. I, I would say that the very first thing we talked about today was the space need. And I, I don't know if these numbers go way back for several years, or if these are fresh, updated numbers, can you please answer that?
Sure, they, we started in 2017, but I will tell you they're updated numbers.
This reflects, if you will, our, our new chief judge of the, of the Kansas Supreme Court, as well as Chief Garing and... So all the, all the current people, if, if you will, I know it gives a lot to us to step in the side, I'm not sure exactly what the status of that is, but in terms of all the, all the people who are in charge of these decisions, in terms of judges and our need for courtrooms, they're all in place and they're all spoken to, our, our plans, so to speak.
The, the district court piece, that's working with Ellen House and Judge Garing, and he has spoken with his supervising judges.
I guess what I'm getting to is, we, we don't know right now if we're going to have magistrates in Cedric County, I think that's the plan still.
Correct.
Okay. In terms of nothing being done yet, I would just like to remind ourselves that we have done a lot of things. We've just added a pretty good sized addition onto the jail. We just turned loose to some money to update and remodel the 11th floor of this building. And so we are providing some different new spaces, and I guess with respect to the new personalities and the fact that we've got some things that are happening, for me personally, I'd like to see the dust settle a little bit and kind of get comfortable with where we're at for just a short time and kind of reevaluate our space needs, because the DA's got some new space he hasn't even got any chance to move into yet. The sheriff has new space he hasn't got a chance to move into yet. And, and Judge Garing has new space in the courtrooms he hasn't gotten a chance to move into yet. So it seems like we're trying to anticipate our, our future space needs, when all three of these agencies actually have things in play right now that might change their, their projections in going forward. So in terms of the urgency of this, I think we should take one step at a time, and since we have things happening right now, I would like to see us just take a small pause and give it a chance for this configuration changes to catch up with our, with our plans. So that's just me. And then I, I think that one thing I do like, I've noticed about this plan, please correct me if I'm wrong, but this is the first time we've seen discussions about the election office actually moving. I think our last time we looked at these plans, the election office wasn't planned to move, I don't believe, so this is a change, and I think that that seems to make sense to me that we ought to do that. This also does not include a fifth floor of the, of the new proposed building. That was, the last time we looked at that, that was included in this, this is not including a fifth expansion floor, right? I am wondering if, you know, in terms of trying to consolidate with Wichita, you know, functions with Wichita, and yet I've, I've said this before, I'll say it again, I don't think any, any serious discussions have happened, but I would rather see Wichita and Cedric County working together and move courtrooms to this building, or our complex, or historic courthouse, or the county courthouse, even though the city may be using those spaces, I'd rather allow them to do that and move some of our government functions over to their building. I think that needs to be thought through. Right now, if you're going to try to consolidate functions of Cedric County's in Wichita, that ought to be on the table. And that hasn't been discussed by either, by anybody that I know of, and I've mentioned this numerous times. Also, I know that it is our custom that each judge is assigned a courtroom, and I understand that's preferred. I guess since we have the obligation to provide all the overhead and, and the operation dollars, I'd like to know, does every county do it this way, or is there any, any place out there that manages courtrooms in such a way that they share courtroom space? Because again, I, I think our courtrooms generally, they're used, there are certain times of the day, certain terms of the week that they're used heavily, but there's a lot of times I think that those courtrooms are not being used. And I base that a little bit on, again, it's anecdotal, but I feel like Monday mornings are busy here, and Thursdays and Fridays, not so much. So I, I don't know if there's a way to manage our courtroom spaces differently that actually provides more courtroom space, maybe more available. And I'd just say that, me personally, I think that we ought to, rather than us throwing out building ideas, I think we ought to, again, reflect back on staff. Let's staff bring those ideas to us. I think commissioners needs to stay, needs to stay out of this. In other words, if I'd say, we have a need for some space, I'm not so sure that 80,000 square feet or 95,000 square feet is the right number, I don't know that, and I don't know what things are out there. I think we ought to be using staff to, to bring those ideas to us. To me, I felt like we only have one option today, and that's to build a new building. And I heard Commissioner O'Donnell throw out the number $50 million, you know, to, to basically get us to the end point, and that, that is sobering. And I think if we're going to be talking about those types, those types of dollars, we ought to know, we ought to know that we have other than, more than just one option. And I'm not, I'm not against this idea, I think this is a good idea, but I'd just like to see what other options are out there. Since we have new commissioners, haven't gone through the process, we ought to maybe back up and, and allow, you know, allow real estate people, developers and such, if you provide, provide maybe a different, a different set of options for the, the current commission to take a fresh look at. So I'll stop talking, that's plenty, thank you so much. Thank you.
I was, I was going to invite you to this comment, because I hadn't heard, heard your anything.
Just taking notes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, anybody else? Is that, are we done?
We're, I think we're done. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Tanya, appreciate it very much.
That's all we had to discuss today.
Did anybody, there's a lot of people in the room, any other electeds want to comment? Kelly, please. Please state your name and address, you have five minutes.
All right, Kelly Harrell, County Clerk. No, basically what I'd like to echo Dennis's comments, you know, best for us is having a, knowing how to plan for the future. We got stuff we need to do in our offices, and do we do those now, or do we, are we going to, you know, have a, a new office and save that until later? So having a decision, we obviously support a new building, we support building on campus, so that's where, that's where we stand.
Thank you, Kelly.
And you speak for Tanya too, right? You discussed it there.
Well, I think we should let Tanya speak for herself.
Well, I can echo the letter that we sent from a year ago, and all three of us, the treasurer, registered deeds, and clerk all fully support moving to a new building. I know at the time, we were looking at moving off campus or staying, building here. We are strongly in favor of staying here on the property, you know, in case something changes that, you know, we may reevaluate our position, but at this point, you know, we strongly favor building a building here. And, you know, I mean, this, this plan would move us out for 36 months, at least, that's what, what it showed, and, you know, we really need to know how to plan. I got layout changes in my office that I've been putting off for several years because I didn't want to spend the money now if I know that we're going to be moving to some leased office for a while. But, you know, we, I've been here for about 12 years, and I think the first couple of months I came here, we were doing space studies, and so this is a discussion that's been going on for that long, and I, and for people I know longer than that, so it's kind of like, how far can we kick this can down the road before we finally make a decision to, to, to build a building and give us the adequate space that, not just our offices, but, you know, more importantly, the other offices need as well. So, but that's up for you guys to decide and how much money we spend.
I'm sorry.
Can we get a copy of that letter?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I've not seen it.
I'm trying to.
I don't recall seeing it either, but that's all, I appreciate you.
It was probably sent before you guys had taken office, because I know it was that fall leading up to you guys, so we could definitely get a copy of that letter to you guys.
All right, we have a, thanks, Kelly. We have a lot to consider. If I had my druthers, I'd like to take a five-year leave of absence and then come back and just move into an office, but we will, it's a large task for us to consider, and so we will, and is, did you look at, could we, did you look at the option if we moved into Century 2? All right, with that.
Okay, on a different note, I have something to announce. I just wanted to announce my travel. I will be traveling to Washington DC for a NACO conference this Saturday. I have a whole plethora of things that I'm going to be working on, and I can provide that to you, Dion, if you'd like, and any other media professionals. On March 1st, I will be attending the Healthy Counties Advisory Caucus, the Large Urban County Caucus, Using Arts to Heal Trauma, Immigration Task Force, and a county explorer demo, in addition to a bunch of other things. So I just wanted to announce my travel so there was no controversy in regards to such topic.
Anyway, well, I'll be traveling to the same NACO conference. In addition, we've been invited to the British Ambassador's residence for a reception by NACO. We've been invited to tour the White House by NACO, and we just got notice last night that the president is coming to speak to NACO on the 3rd, I believe it is. So we'll be able to see him live and in person at the NACO conference, so it's going to be a very interesting conference.
And I'm also hoping, we're also waiting to meet with Senator Moran, Senator Roberts, and hopefully Sharice Davids, haven't had a chance to get ahold of her, so those are additional, Congress, I haven't heard from him. So those are additional contacts that we'll be making.
Tomorrow, we're going to talk, I think, at a special meeting about the legislative agenda for the federal, because if we do get in, and right now, our schedule is changing daily because NACO keeps adding additional things, so I'm not sure how we're going to get in to see all of our legislators, but if we do get in to see our legislators, we need to make sure that we speak for the commission when we go in there.
That is one of the purposes of the meeting this, tomorrow.
Okay. Well, that, unless there's anything else, thank you. Thanks, Justin, and your group for being here. Thank you, Tanya. Have a good day, everybody.